Okay, let's do roll call. Mr. Stunbridge.
President, Madam Chair.
Mr. Valencia.
President, Madam Chair.
Ms. Weewell.
President, Madam Chair.
Mr. Langham.
President, Madam Chair.
Mr. Collins.
President, Madam Chair.
Ms. Panato.
President, Madam Chair.
Excellent. The floor is yours, Mr. Stunbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will return. We will now start with the hearings scheduled for 11:00 AM. And with that, we will ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this time frame?
Mr. Burns?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stunbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're just requesting a deferral for 200 Hillside Street. That'd be BOA 1745070.
Okay, who was name? So again, that would be for case BOA 1745070 with the address of 200 Hillside Street. Would you go and would you give, would you explain to the board?
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, so there was just an issue with advertising. It was supposed to come along with two companion cases. It didn't. We alerted CBA staff to this a few weeks ago, and they already have given us a new board date of October 7. We did not know it was going to be on the agenda today. We thought it had been removed, so I'm just hopping on to to let the board know. So we don't need to be given a new date. We've already been given one, but just wanted to defer here. So, thank you.
Good. Then with that, I will make a motion of the parole through October 7 for this case.
Beckett? Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
There votes yes, the motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Here. Any other requests for a withdrawal or deferral from this time frame?
We don't have additional hands, race at the moment.
Then with that, we will move on to case case BOA 1754168 with the address of 1 Duke Street. If the applicant and/or their representative, Attorney Small, are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, yes, Mr. Stunbridge, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small of a business address on 51 Dobson Road. And today we're here seeking our relief to change the legal occupancy of the building from a two-family dwelling to a three-family dwelling. The zoning here is a, under the old zoning, actually, is a 2F 5,000, and our lot size is approximately 6,000 square feet. The violations that we are cited for were rear yard, uh, and front yard, both. The front yard's modal, and the rear yard is, requirement is 20 feet, and we have 12, which is pre-existing, non-conforming. Under the new zoning in Mattapan, this falls under R2 designation, which allows three and four four units, as allowed. The units will consist of four bedrooms, two baths, and are approximately 2,600 square feet. The house sits on the base of a hill at Orman and Outlook Street, and so the, much of the basement unit is above grade. And there's a picture in the, in the, in the deck that illustrates that as well. Again, changing the legal occupancy from a two to a three, and it's a pretty, it's a pretty big house. I'll stop there and answer any questions that the board may have.
Is there public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Benbury. I'm the Rock Mattapan Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting facilitated on June 16, with one guest, all inquiries regarding parking and occupancy were addressed at the meeting. Next in proponent presented to Wellington Hill Neighborhood Association, with no vote taken, the proposal was approved to move forward in the process. To date, our office has not received any further community feedback at this time. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, you have no additional comments?
With that, Madam Chair.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Have a good day.
Madam Chair, I've been informed that the next case will also be deferred. There is no one here to speak for it, so I'll put it into the record, make a motion, go from there.
Okay.
This, this is for case BOA 1724209 with the address of 6 Groom Street. So, since there is no one here, this administrative deferral for the date of October 28. So there, so I'll make a motion to defer this case until October 28.
Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we have case BOA 1693158 with the address of 155 to 159 Charles Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott, Colty Miller, and Hanley. I am here representing the proponent, Egeria, the owner and proposed developer of the site. I'm also here with Eric Robinson from Rhodey Architects, who is our principal architect, who worked on the team for this development site. I can take you through very quickly the beginning of this presentation, and then ask Eric to show you how this comes together in architectural plans and massing and like. Next slide, Madam Chair, please. So, you know, zoning is about the uniqueness of a site. If there's a degree of uniqueness, this site is, is, is high on that level. So the existing conditions that you'll see, the existing site in orange, you'll see a wedge-shaped site and building on plan left. This is at the northwest corner of Beacon Hill, right at the edge of Charles Circle on the corner of Cambridge and Charles Street. It has, for many years, been a single-story, sort of nondescript building in a historic area where CBS has operated. And before that, back in its history, it was a gas station. The reason for its unusual shape and entirety of lot coverage is because when Cambridge Street was created, the rectangular part of this was cut back, and, and here we are trying to basically sort of cure the ills of what was a past transportation-focused planning. If you go back to the site plan real quickly, up here, yep, you can see that the building, existing building, next slide, the existing building occupies basically the entirety of the site. A little under 2,500 square feet of area. Important here, too, with respect to the abutters and the neighborhood, 151, 153 Charles Street partnership. My client owns both this site as well as planned below. The site that you'll see on Charles Street, which is separated by a private way called Silver Place, which they also have controlling interest in. And so it's these two parcels that, that they own, although obviously it's only the first parcel at the top that we're talking about. Next slide, please. So, you know, the goals of this project, we're in a historic area. We consider this to be a gateway location. Really, it's, it's the entry into Beacon Hill. Charles Circle has had a lot of nonconformities over the past, and we're looking to kind of cure that and bring something that contributes and create sort of a new edge condition, replacing the single-story structure. We are in a residential district, so, and introducing active ground floor retail, which we, we have that use in place now. And on the upper levels to create both market rate and affordable housing, and to do it in a sustainable, you know, design-forward approach, which we've worked closely with the neighbors on. And I will say that this project also will need to go through the Beacon Hill Civic Association, and we've had some advisory work with them. So, in support of the variances, again, if you go up, back up to the hash here, yeah, next slide, up, there you go. Again, I talked about the wedge shape of the site, the constrained footprint, you know, how this was created, you know, by virtue of creation of Charles Circle. It's non-conforming today with all of the setbacks. The private alleyway with shared access provides some mitigation and opportunity for us. We're also looking to activate and invest in the public realm on Charles Circle, which you'll see in the front as part of this development. And the building obviously does not contribute in its highest and best use. And we would also suggest that the relief that is requested is consistent with, as you're looking at this photo, the heights and the entirety of lot coverage and floor area ratio around us. So we sort of have a missing tooth, if you will, in this rhythm of the streetscape. Next slide, please. Okay, maybe not. There we go. Yep, so this is how this comes together in zoning. We are, I will say, you know, that Mr. Semenelli is on, we're in the groundwater conservation overlay district. So we have submitted the no harm letter, and that's been reviewed and approved by, by Boston Water and Sewer. FAR is the big issue. We require an FAR of 5.7. We're in an H265 zone. Because of the uniqueness and the constraints of this site, in order to deliver housing at a height compliant and an allowed use, we need the FAR relief, which we, again, would suggest merely results in something that is contextual with the surrounding area and really is more contributing to the neighborhood. Also, with respect to the front, rear, and side yards, existing nonconformities would be nearly impossible to comply with for any reasonable development. And for the parking, there's no parking now. And we happen to be literally right next to the MBTA train station, of course. The open space, no open space today, but we do have a roof deck component to provide some. And there will be improvements to the public realm out in front and on the circle, which we would suggest support that. Finally, the, the use, the commercial use, which is in place today, we would like to establish for a potential cafe or retail should CBS decide to come back. So how does this all come together in the next slide? You'll see the refusal letter. I will note that if you, if you go back, Madam Chair, just real quickly to sorry, to the fourth page, page four. So, we originally started with a six-story building and was a little higher than the allowed height at 69 feet. 65 is allowed. That's consistent with what we have around us. We spent two years in the community, not just doing the bare minimum, but really going to a great extent to have real detailed discussions with the neighborhood group, with all our neighbors. We started at a garden party in the neighborhood from one of the residents. We conducted another community meeting before even proceeding. Several meetings with the Beacon Hill Civic Association, which ultimately voted not to oppose this based on the revisions, which you'll see here at the bottom of the plan. So we've removed the sixth floor and now have only mechanical inaccess, which is compliant, and no occupied interior space. As a result, the height that we're seeking is 60, which is five feet less than what the zoning code requires. And that has been amended in the revised refusal letter that we provided to you. We also set back, we have some, some modest overhangs here that respond to this edge condition. We set that back, and then we reduced those overhangs by 60%, lowering the FAR all as part of this real extensive guidance that we are thankful for from the neighborhood group and residents in the area. So, Madam Chair, if you want to move forward to the initial massing site, I'll hand it over to, I think it's probably page eight, to Eric Robinson to go through that. There you go. Eric?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Nice to see you. So I think, I just want to quickly touch base, because as Joe's referenced, this is a very unique site, none other like any in Boston. And so I think the process has been robust with the community. It's been very productive. But I think the, the goals of this project that we set forth as architects was to make sure that it felt of its place, it was listening to the community, and it was going to be a good civic neighbor. And so really setting forth this as a gateway on the north side of Charles was critical. And so the height matching the top shelf building that you see on the left-hand side, and then also in alignment with the fairly new Whitney Hotel to the other side of Charles is actually quite important from an urbanistic standpoint, as this is a moment at a street corner, where we want to make sure we redefine that. And that is something that we did hear through the Landmarks Advisory Commission as a good move on part of this site. Next slide. So, three goals were set forth on this project. The one I just referenced was really making sure the massing knitted into its place. The second was, we heard a lot of community discussion about the activation of the streetscape and this important corner to both the neighborhood and the city. So that's something we heard loud and clear. And then also a desire to add residential housing with affordability in Beacon Hill was also critical. So the three goals set forth, we are achieving those goals with this proposal. Next slide. Very quickly, here you can see the current floor plan, where we're positioning all the commercial retail to have eyes on the street in terms of this corner, as it anchors Charles and Cambridge Street. And additionally, we're adding the residential access point off of Silver Place to keep eyes on that side of the building as well. So reactivating really three sides of the building in its future proposed date, which we think is critical to hearing some of the community comments on activity in this area to make sure it feels secure and safe. Next slide. So we are proposing 12 residential units and a mix of units. So we have two-bedroom, one-bedroom, and a studio. It's a very tight floor plate. But these are actually great units that provide a variety of residential opportunities for both people in the community that we heard loud and clear through a fully accessible building where members would like to stay in the community and as they downsize. And so we did intentionally create a nice mix of units to address the concerns of the community. Next slide. Just confirming, with the elevations, our height, we are sitting about 60 feet, which is five feet below the allowable zoning height in this area. Next slide. Architecture is something that we talked a lot about, even though it was fairly early in the process. We will be going back to landmarks and working with landmarks. But really, the goal was to, again, to have a building that feels of its place and is knitted into the surrounding context, and then actually anchoring this corner as a nice moment. So here you can see just some images of that in terms of preliminarily how we're sitting it on the corner, as well as the enhanced streetscape at the corner on the bottom two renderings. With that, I will turn it back over to Joe or the chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes our presentation.
And to confirm, you have, sorry, Madam Chair.
All right.
Okay, you have 12 or 13 units of housing?
12, and two, two affordable, which is about 17%.
70%. And what are the AMIs for those units?
Believe 70% of AMI. So we had, this has been out there for a little while. We filed before the enactment of Article 79. But clearly, 70% AMI in Beacon Hill is, is a real opportunity for, for folks.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair and board members, Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on March 10 of this year, which was well-attended. Number of abutters were supportive of the proposal. A direct abutter, direct abutters had some concerns about blocked views. Another abutter expressed concerns about the material of the building, which they felt should be traditional brick rather than the proposed terracotta to match the context of the historic area. Another abutter was concerned that the design might infringe on the public way. Our offices received one letter of opposition. Abutters were generally supportive of this level of density on the site. Proponent also engaged a process with the Beacon Hill Civic Association and met with them multiple times, which resulted in a vote of non-opposition from that group. That background, our office defers judgment to the board. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Christian Semenelli.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. And we have both two card letters from the applicant.
Thank you. Next, we have Samantha Courage.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. This is Samantha Courage on behalf of Councilor Sharon Durkin. The council supports this proposal in Beacon Hill. The project has gone through an extensive community engagement, and we, the council is grateful for the time and thoughtfulness to residents of abutters, as well as the Beacon Hill Civic Association zoning and license committee, who ultimately voted to not oppose this project. In response to initial neighborhood concerns, the developer has made substantial renovations to this design, including reducing the building from six to five stories and eliminating a large overhang that was previously proposed, and replacing that with a modest bump out. This change reduces the projection over the sidewalk by about 60%. This also reduces the number of residential units from six, from 13 to 12, while maintaining two onsite IDP units. And this keeps the rooftop mechanicals within the zoning limits needed for height variance. The council recognizes the site's significance as a gateway to Beacon Hill and as this opportunity it presents to activate the area. She cares deeply about preserving Beacon Hill's character, history, charm, but also understands the importance of creating more housing. The adjustments may demonstrate a genuine effort to reflect community input while maintaining the benefits of a mixed-use project that will bring in new housing and activate the ground floor retail or restaurant space to Charles Street. For these reasons, Councilor Durkin respectfully requests your approval of this relief today. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Okay, and Antonio Gilardini?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anthony Juari from City Council, here in Murphy's office. The council to go on record in support of the application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Andrew Hansen.
Good morning. Thank you to the chair, thank you to the board for hearing me this morning. This was not true, what was just represented. Abutters had strong objections to this project. I suggest you go back to the Civic Association's meetings during these projects. Multiple abutters have objected over the height and the massing of this building. Specifically, that this, they're requesting an FAR of 5.7 on a block that averages, that median FAR is a 3.3, the mean, the average is 3.16. The building they're comparing it to, which is the Whitney Hotel, is also under 4. Nothing on that block is under, or, sorry, nothing under that block is over a 4 FAR. And that this massing is completely inappropriate for the, for the zone. We've sent multiple letters to both the city and councilwoman's office, and we are very disappointed in this project. We're on an, I'm a direct abutter within the zone, and we're on an HOA that has three rooftop decks that will be affected by the massing of this specific building. And we ask at this time that this board really consider what's being presented. We'd also like, we'd also appreciate if the, if the councilwoman's office could be honest in that she changed her view on this project when the attorneys for this project gave a max donation on the same day as the community input meeting, and that the abutters are very well aware of this, and that it is not from an organic community process. So those are my comments at this time. The 5.7 is a completely inappropriate FAR for this historic district. And we ask that you deny the FAR for this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, there are no additional hands raised at the moment.
The applicant briefly addressed those concerns?
Yeah, and I want to thank Mr. Mr. Hanson for his participation in this process. He is correct that there was input and concern about the project, which was sort of the genesis of two years of extensive outreach and these modifications that were made in response, including the height and lowering the height to not just a zoning compliant height, but five feet beneath that. And clearly, you're not entitled to a view, but if you have a roof deck, if you have a height-compliant project next to you, that's certainly respectful from that standpoint. I'll also say that if you read the BPDA recommendation in support with respect to FAR, and Mr. Hanson had, had mentioned others in the district, other sites, these are symmetrical lots. These are not of the extent of uniqueness that we have in this situation. And you can see that in the BPDA recommendation. This is a generational opportunity, really, to cure the ills of what was happening to this site in particular as a result of the creation of Cambridge Street. And the final thing, I won't speak for the Beacon Hill Civic Association. I don't know if Mr. Hanson can. I don't know if Mr. Hanson can either, but they can speak for themselves. And if you look at the extensive letter that they provided after many meetings together, this is a tough group. FAR is not something that Beacon Hill takes lightly. And their non-opposition, which is akin to support, is the result of all these compromises for a project that really fits and complies with the uniqueness aspects for the grant of these variances.
Any other questions from the board? Chair, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion of approval with the proviso that a housing agreement be issued prior to issuing any permits and that plan be reviewed by landmarks. I think this project is contextual with the neighborhood in terms of FAR, open space, and the off-street parking variances. I think the site's shape drives a lot of the zoning relief requested. And it's an improvement over existing conditions while allowing for housing in a historic, walkable area that is well-located to transit.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second? Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato? Ms. Panato? Oh, did I? Did I lose Ms. Panato, or can I just not hear her?
I couldn't hear.
Uh, yes?
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay. Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the board.
And with that, we'll continue to the rediscussions, hearings scheduled for 11:30 a.m. We'll ask if there, at this time, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this timeframe?
Yes, right. Eighteen interval?
So that will be for case BOA 1707353 with the address of 18 Intervale Street. Would you go ahead and explain, Attorney Spitz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stembridge. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams and Marancy, business address of 168 Eighth Street, first floor, South Boston. We're requesting a deferral on this matter. The previous deferral was requested as an administrative deferral where I was just retained to represent the client at that point in time. Given the fact that I've done some due diligence and I've read over the planning department's recommendation, we would like to make some changes. So we want a little bit more time to do such. So again, we're requesting administrative deferral to make those changes. Actually, not administrative, let me correct myself. Administrative deferral, just a deferral, please.
Uh, what would be a useful timeframe? Actually, sorry, Caroline, what's available?
Yeah, certain, um, we could do November 18th, November 25th, or December 9th, or December 16th.
Let's, let's, let's shoot for, to play it safe. What was the last date in November that you gave, the 25th?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take the 25th. And that should allow us enough time to make changes and get them, submit, resubmit them.
May I have a motion?
Motion to defer till November the 25th.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
If there aren't any further requests for withdrawals or deferral?
Excuse me, my name, my name is Jody Sanches, and I'd also like to request a deferral on matter, case number BOA.
What's the address, the address?
It's 501 Boylston Street.
Okay, Mr. Stembridge will read it into the record.
So that would be, so this request is for case BOA 1670329 with the address of 501 Boylston Street? Would you go ahead and explain to the board, please?
Uh, yes, thank you. So we were, our matter was previously deferred pending Air Pollution Control Commission hearing. We are still working on the completion of that process. We're targeting a November 12 APCC hearing date. So we are respectfully requesting a ZBA hearing date following that November 12 date.
We could do November 18th or November 25th?
The 18th would be perfect.
Do that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer until November 18th.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, we've also administrably deferred 6 Almont Street.
Okay.
So, so this, this deferral will be for case BOA 1748759 with the address of 6 Almont Street. As, as been, as been said, this has been deferred administrative deferral until October 7. So I will make a motion to defer this case until October 7.
Okay. Second? Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
So with that, then, we'll move on and, move on back to the rediscussion scheduled for 11:30. And we will go to case BOA 1613738 with the address of 33 Crescent Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, Mr. Secretary. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher of 686 Architects with the business address of 10 Forest Road in Braintree. I'm here today on behalf of Todd Stone, Cliff Moeller, for the proposed development of 31 to 33 Crescent Ave. This is the existing building before you. Next slide, thank you.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I need to recuse.
Okay, that makes us a six-member board.
That's fine, Madam Chair, thank you. The proposal is to raise the existing structure and to construct a new three-story, nine-unit residential building with six parking spaces at grade. Next slide, please. Uh, this is our site use plan, including 1,599 square feet of open space around the building, including a 10-foot side yard setback, five foot to the rear, and about three feet on the Grant Street side. Three full-size parking spaces on this level, three compact spaces. We also have nine bikes, bike, bicycle storage spaces and an at-grade trash room, which we can be brought out of a rear door to the street for pickup. And a one-bedroom at this level. Next slide, please. As our floor plans go up, they are pretty typical and they repeat. We have five one-beds, which range from 547 to 625 square feet, two one-bed pluses, which are 739 square feet, and then two two-bed pluses, which are 877 square feet and 955 square feet. Next slide, please. Again, this is the third floor plan, our roof plan. No roof deck, no common roof deck. We, we did not opt to include that as open space. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the building in elevation. Again, each balcony gets a, each unit gets a small balcony to create some outdoor space. We have submitted for the, for the board's review 16 letters of support, including from our director butters at 37 Crescent Ave and 8 Grant Street. And I also believe that the BPDA has recommended approval of this project as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to the board for any questions.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Christopher, are you required to compile with the IDP mandates?
No, this project was filed. We had a little bit of a lull between our community process and this hearing date. So this project was filed in advance of those requirements.
Okay, in that case, all your units are market rate?
That's correct.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, ma'am, public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Samantha, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 33 Crescent Avenue, our office will defer to the board's judgment on this proposal. A community process was conducted about a year ago, including an abutters meeting held on 2725, attended by 10 community members. The feedback from this meeting was significant opposition to this proposal, citing the cohesion of the proposal with the rest of the neighborhood and the significant increase to density, citing that nine units was far too many. Additionally, we received three letters of opposition to this proposal, all of which are within the 300-foot abutters radius, and 17 letters of support, several of them are also within the abutters 300-foot radius. The proposal was also reviewed with the Columbia Seven Hills Civic Association and expressed opposition by both the planning committee, who voted six in support and 17 opposed, and one abstained, as well as the general membership, who voted six to support, 28 to oppose. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services defers to board's judgment on this matter. Thank you, everybody, for your time and consideration.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. As mentioned, our office receiving 16 letters of support from director butters as well. Our office would let go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Okay, and next we have Christine Hoag. Christine? If not, next, Anthony Gilardini?
Hi, sorry, I'm trying to unmute here. This is Christine Hoag. I'm chair of the Columbia Seven Hills Civic Association. I appreciate your time and consideration. As Eva mentioned, we voted to oppose this proposal. We support additional housing in our neighborhood, but feel this particular project is better suited to Dorchester Avenue or Morrissey Boulevard, at which there are 754 new units planned, including 654 one-bedroom and studio apartments. Currently, there seems to be a glut of rentals in our area or availability of rentals in our area. So we respectfully oppose this project. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Anthony Gilardini?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anthony Jirati from City Council, Aaron Murphy's office. The council would like to go on record in support of this application. Thank you.
Uh, we don't, we don't have additional comments.
Would the applicant like to briefly address those concerns?
Um, just in, by, by way of use in design, we feel that the existing building underutilized the site by increasing the footprint slightly and still maintaining a significant amount of open space. We're allowed to add these additional units of housing. We are improving the, the street wall continuity in following the line of the sidewalk. And we feel that the height and the use, based on the building's location, are very appropriate. This is a dense section of Seven Hills. It's well within walking distance to JFK, just a minute to JFK, a couple of blocks to Dot Ave, and, and just a short walk to Seven Hills. So we believe that this is an appropriate area for this density and that it exists already in the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, ma'am chair, I have a question for Jeff Hampton from the planning department.
The planning department has recommended approval.
No, yes, I have a question for Jeff.
Mr. Hampton, are you on?
I'm sorry, Mr. Hampton.
I'm hearing, Madam Chair, yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hampton. I'm reviewing the recommendation from the planning department, and it mentions that the project has seven or more units and is, it must comply with inclusionary zoning. So just asking you about the planning department recommendation that is mentioned in the IDP.
Yeah, Mr. Valencia, you know, that's an accurate statement on that. The Article 79 didn't come into effect until 2024. This project was under review prior to that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hampton. Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Ma'am chair, I make a motion of approval with continued, uh, design review with the planning department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins? Oh, yeah, sorry. Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much for your time.
The next two cases have been deferred. So that will take us to two companion cases. First is case BOA 1598189 with the address of 1A to 1B Mystic Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1598199 with the address of 223 to 225 Bunker Hill Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain cases to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stembridge. Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So I have the camera and the microphone working. Good, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway, South Boston. I represent Fahid Nicport in this matter. Project architect Tim Sheen is also in attendance. This is a project at the corner of Bunker Hill Street and Mystic Street. There's a single lot here. The overall site is approximately 4,714 square feet. It is a single lot at the corner of Bunker Hill Street and Mystic Street within an LC local convenience zoning sub-district. The lot is almost entirely occupied by a single-story commercial building housing bunker hill dry cleaners. While zone local convenience, this side of Bunker Hill Street is predominantly residential in character, and Mystic Street is essentially entirely residential. What is proposed is a subdivision of the lot into two lots. The Bunker Hill Street lot would be 2,071 square feet in size, and the Mystic Street lot, 2,643 square feet. New residential construction is proposed consisting of a three-townhouse unit building along Bunker Hill Street and a two-townhouse unit building on Mystic Street. With respect to the request of zoning relief, 223-225 Bunker Hill Street is cited for three conditional use violations, all arising from the commercial nature of the applicable LC local convenience zoning. As the planning recommendation makes clear, ground floor residential use here is appropriate and reasonable owing to the transitional nature of the site's location between an LC and a residential zone. More significant, by the client did originally propose a mixed-use project with ground floor commercial use at the site, but the neighbors voiced a strong preference for no commercial uses at this site during the first abutters meeting. The plans were then changed to entirely residential in compliance with the request of the neighbors. There's a rear yard setback violation for which variance is requested. Since this is a corner lot, the rear yard area for the Bunker Hill Street building is also a side yard with respect to the proposed building on Mystic Street. And that provided setback on the Mystic Street side, which exceeds the side yard setback on Mystic Street, makes for a three-foot rear setback for the Bunker Hill Street building. Also, owing to this being a corner lot, is a cited violation for cross-corner visibility. Would point out, however, that Bunker Hill Street is a 60-foot right-of-way and Mystic Street is a one-way street traveling from Bunker Hill Street. And that on Bunker Hill Street, at the intersection on each side, by Mystic Street, I should say, on each side are widened sidewalk extensions, providing a greater degree of pedestrian vehicular visibility as well as serving as a speed inhibitor for vehicles entering Mystic Street from Bunker Hill Street. There is an FAR violation. The maximum FAR under LC zoning is two, while the proposed FAR is approximately 2.96, which is consistent. two point nine six, which is consistent with the neighborhood character and built form, as the planning recommendation phrases it. With respect to Mystic Street zoning, there are also two conditional uses cited for the ground floor residential use. There is also a rear yard setback violation. The required rear yard setback is twenty feet, while just over eleven feet, um, uh, would be provided. Uh, this is highly consistent with as-built conditions, as noted on the planning recommendation. Uh, I, um, went into the assessing department screen, accounted about twenty-five existing residential buildings on this side of Mystic Street, and the proposed setback here is identical to nearly all of them. Uh, finally, there's a cited F A R violation for Mystic Street. The lot size here, after the subdivision, would be two thousand six hundred forty-three square feet, and, uh, referencing the zoning table on the plans, uh, the two proposed units would comprise approximately five thousand two hundred sixty-five square feet, which, to my calculation, is just underneath a lot of maximum F A R two. So I raise the question of whether there actually is an F A R violation here. If there is, uh, it is, uh, an exceedingly close violation, that close to compliance. With that, um, I'll turn it over to Tim Sheehan, just to very briefly go through the plans, and then we'll be happy to take any questions, uh, from board members. Tim?
Yes, hello, everybody. I'm Timothy Sheehan, architect. I'm at Nine Wall Street. I live two blocks away from the site. Uh, I've been walking by it my whole life. It's my old dentist. Yeah, essentially, what we're planning to do is, on the Bunker Hill Street side, three Charlestown townhouses, eighteen-foot, one and a half inch wide, um, four bedrooms with a half-finished basement, uh, very much in demand in Charlestown. And as we come around the corner onto Mystic Street, there are two, you know, both of them are the same. We've matched the corner side on Mystic Street, our adjacent property. Um, we've held off, we've held off three and a half feet, uh, actually on both sides, from both neighboring properties. Mystic Street parcel lot will be two, slightly larger, twenty feet wide. We went a little deeper there, closer to twenty-three eighty square feet each. The ones on Bunker Hill Street are a bit narrower. They're eighteen change. They're closer to eighteen hundred square feet each, but they're still, as well, have four bedrooms. So this is five units of highly desirable, um, housing in Charlestown, single families. It's what people are looking for. Um, with that, I'll hand it over to the questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, ma'am, public testimony?
Madam Chair and board members, Suge Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the O M S community process. Our office hosted in a butters meeting on August twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, at which substantial revisions were made to the proposal in response to comments from a butters. Follow-up a butters meeting was held on February twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-five. Concerns from butters remained about parking, possible loss of mature trees, the location of the trash storage for the Bunker Hill Street units, and the setback on the Mystic Street side of the property and its effects on the foundation of the abutting property. Our offices received two letters of opposition that have been forwarded to the board. With that background, our office defers judgment to the board. Thank you.
Next, we have Patrick.
I, I don't know if there's any. I'm in opposition. I don't know if there's any other public officials here.
Uh, Mr. Gilardi, and then maybe Mr. Sheehan?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anthony Gilardi from City Council, Aaron Murphy's office. The council would like to go on record in support of the application. Thank you.
Okay, next, you can go. Patrick?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Attorney Patrick Sweeney. I represent Bunker Hill Realty LLC, which is located at two twenty Bunker Hill Street, directly across the street from this project. That same property is also the home of, for a hundred years now, Car Funeral Home. Uh, my client is concerned about a number of things here. Predominantly, it's the, uh, overburdening of these lots. As Attorney Maranci has noted, the, uh, proponent has a single lot on Bunker Hill Street. He is suggesting that it be divided into two lots, neither of one, neither of which meet the required code, and both, of course, require variances with respect to F A R as well as, um, rear setback. Uh, I note the Bunker Hill Street has a three-foot rear yard. Um, that's it. The, uh, issue here, in, in our mind, is that, uh, they're creating these problems, uh, whereas a single use of the Bunker Hill Street property without creating this, uh, one A and one B Mystic, and incidentally, there is already a one Mystic. Uh, but by creating this, they're the ones that have created the problem. We also note that because they're using the, uh, neighborhood shopping zone, and that's right to do so, um, they don't have to require, they don't have to comply with minimum lot requirements. So they get away from the minimum lot requirement, which would be necessary.
Will you tighten up your comments, Mr. Sweeney? I'm gonna ask you to tighten them up and wrap up.
Okay. Uh, I'd also note, members of the board, there's been absolutely no evidence that this, these, either of these lots are unique. There's no evidence that either of these lot, lots will experience hardship or difficulty for the proponent, and there's no evidence of special circumstances here. What you have here is one lot that someone has decided to turn into two and then ask for the relief.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
Madam Chair, no further additional comments.
Can the applicant address, briefly address these concerns?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, with respect to the development program for the site, uh, the option certainly could have been exercised pursuant to this as a single building, uh, occupying that corner lot, but, uh, the, uh, my client thought it was a better option to provide townhouse units, multi-bedroom townhouse units, uh, which are very much in demand in Charlestown, and allow something akin to single-family home living, uh, for people who either want to move to Charlestown or families living there who are looking for, uh, a larger home and would like to remain in the neighborhood, as Tim indicated. With respect to the zoning, most of the relief being sought are conditional use premises, uh, permits owing only to the fact that, uh, of the residential, uh, component on the ground floor of the buildings, again, not a variance standard. The variance is required for F A R, front building's F A R, resulting F A R is, uh, very much aligned with prevailing conditions in the neighborhood. As the planning recommendation notes, a Mystic Street building, I think, actually has compliant F A R, but even if it doesn't, uh, it's very, very close to compliance. Uh, the rear yard setback for the Bunker Hill property, as I mentioned, and as is also noted in the planning recommendation, is a rear yard, uh, side yard with respect to the Mystic Street property, so a compliant rear yard, it would essentially create, uh, a large gap on Mystic Street and would make that side of the lot undelible, except, of course, for one large apartment building. That's not the route that my client wishes to go. He wanted to provide these townhouse units.
Madam Chair, a brief announcement of person. I'm not sure if there's time.
Uh, okay, briefly?
Okay, the person with the number five five six nine, you can... Speak now?
Hello?
Yes, please briefly state your name and address for the record, and whether you're in support or opposition.
Um, good, good, af, good morning, Madam Chair and board members. My name is Tom Cobb, and I have happily resided at number five Mystic Street in Charlestown for fifty-two years. And I'd like to say at this time, I don't know of anyone who lives in my neighborhood that is in favor of this proposal. One of the main things that everyone was very upset about is the, um, splitting of this lot into two and creating the one A and one B Mystic Streets. What happens here when this is done is that the house numbers on Mystic Street, beginning with one, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, and eighteen, we, right now retain their present unobstructive views with natural light and airflow, they all now greatly enjoy and will lose if this proposal is allowed. I thank you for listening to me and my fellow neighbors' concerns, how this proposal will impact the peace and enjoyment of our homes.
Thank you.
It is extremely large and inappropriate for this site. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the board? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll, um, put forward a motion for my colleagues to consider, uh, for approval with provisos that plans be submitted, um, to the planning department for designer view because of the location within the neighborhood design overlay district and attention to compliance with the design guidelines in planned Charlestown. I think this is an improvement over existing conditions. It allows for increased setbacks where, um, in some cases, there is zero setback and allows for more open space together, um, when looking at the both lots, so.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Y-yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
And with that, I will try and defer.
Mr. Stenbridge is gonna stretch out thirty seconds so we can get to noon with our break? And Mr. Hanley is going to be kithier than last time?
Wow, you don't need the thirty seconds from me, right?
My phone's back.
Yeah, just to make sh, just to make sure it is September twenty-third. Uh, let's see here, yeah, um, make sure we didn't miss anything prior to this, um...
Okay, I see the noon hour on my, on my...
It's miraculously arrived, so, um, with that, we will go to the rehearing scheduled for noon time. This will be for case B O A, one six nine zero seven zero six, with the address of five five oh seven Massachusetts Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Great, um, thank you, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott, Colty Miller, and Hanley with, here with the owner-operators of the Chester, uh, the hotel lodging, it's just existing hotel and lodging house at five oh seven Mass Ave, Tom Callis and Armando Hernandez. Uh, this is a legally existing, uh, non-conforming use at five oh seven, uh, Mass Ave in the Chester Square section of, uh, the South End. Uh, it comprise of, uh, seven lodging house units and about fifteen hundred square feet of formerly residential space, uh, on the street level. Uh, this board granted, uh, reconsideration at its August twelfth hearing. Uh, from a prior hearing, the discrepancy was, uh, in reviewing the existing condition plans as to whether they were storage or residential. That has been cleared up. Uh, they are, it, it was previously residential. What we are seeking to do is merely to convert that space on, uh, the street level, which you'll see right there if you stop. Yep, that's the existing conditions. Uh, again, it was formerly a, a single residential unit, uh, to the right. That's existing. The next slide is proposed. All of this is just within the existing structure, and so you'll see, uh, the three units that are about four hundred square feet, studios, lodging house, uh, units, and, uh, that they have direct access to a, uh, grad, uh, at-grade patio that's about a thousand square feet. Um, so the relief that we need, uh, again, I told you about the legally existing non-conforming use. We're in a multifamily residential district. Uh, the use has been established for many years, and we're just improving and converting that lower level into, uh, the same use of which it's been operated successfully. Uh, my client, uh, bought the building in two thousand twenty-three and did a lot of work, uh, to renovate and upgrade it, and we have, uh, worked very closely with the Neighborhood Association, which is in support of this. Uh, open space is another zoning issue. Under Article sixty-four, um, they interpret the lodging house, uh, to be akin to a residential unit for two hundred, yeah, square feet, uh, per unit for open space. Again, I showed you direct access to the patio, which is a thousand square feet. That's actually more than, than most of these existing structures in the South End have, uh, combined with the other units. It doesn't comply, but it certainly meets the spirit, uh, of that, and it's an improved circumstance. Um, the F A R that we were cited for is, I think, a questionable citation, but it relates to the existing non-conformity. Again, the, the certified and corrected plan showed that the space, approximately fifteen hundred square feet to be converted, was residential, uh, and, and is merely being changed to lodging house units, so it's existing, uh, F A R. And finally, the additional lot area per dwelling unit, um, the code looks at this as akin to residential units that would require an eleven thousand square foot lot, which is obviously impractical and inconsistent, uh, with this pretty standard lot within the location. And again, all the work is being done within the existing, uh, footprint of the building. Um, and so, uh, with that, I will hand it back to the chair.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none, let's take public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Roxbury Community Engagements Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, again, which consisted of an butters meeting, uh, with majority of butters in support of the proposal, with one voice of concerns for parking. Next, the proposal was presented to Chester Square Neighbors, where they voted in support of the proposal. To date, our office has received five letters of support, including one from the Civic, and a thirteen signature support petition. Thank you for your time. And the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to defer to the board for the judgment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Oliver Humbert.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair and board. Uh, my name's Oliver Humbert. I live at, uh, six six two Tremont Street in the South End. I've been there for eight years. Um, I'd like to support the addition of these units. Um, my parents actually stayed at the property a while back. Uh, I feel like we need more short and midterm accommodation in the neighborhood. It's traditionally been really hard to find things. Um, it's a very convenient location, only a few, few blocks away. Um, I was actually there as well with my parents for a couple of days. The historic renovation they did, um, in the units above, um, are really nice, and, uh, I remember when the building was actually falling apart before they did this, so it was, it was really nice to see that. Um, I also feel like we need more active business, um, in that Mass Ave corridor to kind of keep that, to activate that area a little bit, because it's, I don't know if you guys are familiar with that, that block, um, between Tremont, Shamet, Washington, but it would be nice to sort of invigorate that area. And again, um, the necessity for more short and medium-term, um, rental or, or, um, places for people to stay, I feel like is, is really important in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Next, we have Kai Vernstrom.
Hello. Uh, hi, my name is Kai Vernstrom. Um, I'm a directive butter residing at five eleven Mass Ave. Um, I just want to quickly, um, express my support, uh, for this expansion. You know, Armando and his team have been operating the Chester for a little over a year, I believe now, um, and they've done a really nice job with the restoration. I think it's really enhanced the, uh, the block and the neighborhood, um, as a whole, in my opinion. You know, we've never had any issues with noise, and, you know, Armando and Tom and the rest of the team, they've been great neighbors, um, to us. And just echoing the previous comments, you know, I think this provides a real public benefit. You know, I've been able to utilize the Inn to host visiting friends and family. I know others in our, uh, condo associate, association have done so as well. Um, and also just want to point out that, you know, Armando has always made himself available to me, um, with any, you know, issues that have come up. There haven't really been any, but, um, appreciate that he has always done that. Um, and from what I can tell, he and Tom have been very engaged with the Neighborhood Association. And just finally, I want to say that, um, you know, certainly for us as directive butters, I think we'll be significantly better off with that lower level, uh, being occupied and used rather than being left vacant. Um, I've submitted a letter of support, um, in addition to appearing before the board today, and so, um, yeah... And so, yeah, in conclusion, I am strongly in favor of this expansion. Don't seek any reason for anyone to oppose it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, there are no additional comments.
At that, may I have a motion?
May I make a motion of approval?
Is there a second?
Not yet.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for your support.
And we'll move on to two interpretation slash rediscussion cases scheduled for noon, 12 noon. The first is case BOA 1689794 with the address of 62 to 66 Convoy Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Good afternoon. Attorney Lawrence Scatino covering for Richard Lins. We're actually going to be seeking a deferral on this case and the next one. We're still working through some issues with ISD on these, but we do think we'll have them resolved by the end of October.
We could do November 18?
That's fine.
This is for, this is for the two cases that are scheduled.
Yes, yes.
So then to read the second one into the record, that would be for also for case BOA 1685296 with the address of 265 to 269 Maverick Street. Thank you for the explanation and the available dates will be?
November 18.
So I will make a motion to defer these cases, both these cases, to defer them to November 18?
Second. Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then. All right. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for bearing with my audio problems, too.
Thank you.
All right, we'll see you next time. Recording stopped.